Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the June 27th Board Meeting of the Bedford County Board of Education Order at this time. Before we get into the agenda, as you can see, we have a white bow at one of our board places tonight, June 17th. We lost one of our board members, Ms. Barbara Boyd-Williams. Some of us were able to attend the service today. It was a very nice service, and Ms. Barbara will be deeply missed. And at this time, I will ask if any other board member would like to make a comment. And if not, I understand.
Well, I'll say she was just a really nice lady. I've been on the board eight years, eight and a half years. When I first got here, it was kind of funny. She never said anything to me, and it took me several months. I thought, well, does she like me? Does she not like me? And she was just a very private person. And one day, she called me at home, and it all just clicked after that. And she was just an extremely nice lady.
And I want to share one of the last conversations I had with Ms. Barbara. I had no idea at the time it's going to be the last one. My first night on the board, I was as green as green could be, and I didn't understand any of the acronyms that they were all talking about up here, and I was very lost. And so I had a lot of questions. And at the end of the meeting, as I was walking behind her, she tapped me on the hand. She said, "Honey, don't ever be afraid to ask a question, because usually the rest of us have that same question, and we're too embarrassed to ask." So she said, I said, "Well, I'll keep using the 'I'm new, I will know anything' excuse for as long as you need me to." And she said, "If you ever have a question on how to vote," she said right straight across from me. She said, "You just look over here, and I'm going to shake my head yes or no." And so as time went on, I learned to vote the way I thought, but I did follow Ms. Barbara's lead for a long time. Well, a few weeks ago, when she was at her last meeting, I went by her, and she was, the meeting was over, and she tapped me, and she said, "Do you remember what I told you on your first night?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am. You said to look at you, and I know how to vote." And she said, "I've missed so many meetings that I'm looking at you now to see how to vote." So I thought that was really sweet, but she was a wonderful, wonderful lady.
I'd just like to say that Barbara was more than a board member to me. She was a friend. As a matter of fact, I was the one that begged her to become a member of this board, and she did, and I've enjoyed her. I've missed her. I visit her during her sickness, and I know I still learned a lot from her. But we know that she did the best she could as a board member here, and we appreciate that, and we want to say to her family, "Thank you for lending her to us."
Absolutely.
Before we move on, I'd like to ask that everyone in the room just pause for a moment Thank you. Item number two, approval of the agenda that's in front of you. I want to take a motion.
Sub move.
With the adjustment that we just had.
Yeah.
Right. Got a motion? Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? See you then. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Rick Anderson if he will to come forward, and let's recognize the state champion track team.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to come tonight and to recognize these young ladies. These young ladies are the four-by-two-hundred relay state champions for 1A females track in the state of North Carolina this year, and it gives me great pleasure to introduce. I'm going to introduce all four, even though we only have two that are here. Not with us tonight is Natasha Bishop and Nikia Johnson. Two that are with us are Imani Redman, if you'll come up, Imani, and then also Jacqueline Wood. And I would also like to recognize their coach, Coach Quintero. Coach, if you'd come up as well. You know, you're going to have to do that.
No, I'll do it.
If we could get them just to shake the hand of the board, we'd like to get a picture with them after they do that.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She's a volunteer.
I hear there's more store for you, too.
Oh, yes.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations.
You do a great job.
Great job.
That would be a great job.
Yes, already.
Suzanne in the back.
They only make me a little.
She's a good lady.
It ain't worth it.
But I love him to death.
That's all right.
You don't want to get in a footrace with him.
No, no.
I'm sure of that.
Thanks for coming, though, Sharon.
Yes, thank y'all.
What grade, what grade are they? What Spanish?
11th grade and 12th grade.
How about the other two?
Well, yeah. College and 12th grade.
What about the other two?
The other two, help me.
Um, yeah, Nikia Johnson, she was in with me. Bishop, she's going to be right here with Jay.
Two of them will be back.
So we can look for one over next year. That's a good deal.
No pressure.
Good luck.
You set the bar high.
That's fine. Can't go much further.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number four, no action. Washington High School Soccer Complex. Mr. Johnny Rodman, City of Washington, if you will come forward. Appreciate it.
While he's coming up, Kim Edwards and I asked Mr. Rodman to speak with the board, just kind of update on where we're at with the soccer complex at Washington. There have just been some hurdles in light of the track team here tonight that we have to overcome, and asking Mr. Rodman to speak on those if you will.
May I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can I just wanted to give you a little update on our conference room in just a second. Wanted to give you some maps so you know what we're looking at as we make decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. I want to make sure to clear up any concerns or any questions that the board may have. For those of you that do not know me, my name is John Rodman. I work for the City of Washington. I'm the Director of Planning and Building, and I wanted to tell you where we are in the process for the new sports complex, soccer complex out at the high school. Like we said before, it's been a little concerned about what's going on. I just wrote down some notes for you about where we are in the process. The first thing that happened was the city had a preliminary site plan presented to the city. We look at that, the planning department looks at that, and if there's any recommendations or concerns or anything that we have, we make that to the presenter that gave that to us. There were several recommendations that I had that came in our site plan, and you'll see those three there. First of all, is what we call a recombination of property. That means that you're combining properties that are in close proximity. If you go to the first page of your map, you'll see this is the property in question that we're talking about that has been purchased for the proposed soccer complex. The next page with, is this is the actual site plan that was presented to the city. With that, I said I made some recommendations that may help the process along. The first recommendation was, like I said, a recombination. That's combining properties, so that instead of having several properties, you have one. And that helps in several ways. If you look at the site plan, I've got it marked in yellow, and you can see when they did the site plan for the complex, some of those fields are encroaching over the property lines, and you don't want that to occur. You know, it just makes everything nice and clean. So one of my recommendations was that if you combine the newly purchased property with the high school, Washington High School site, you won't have that issue. So that was my first recommendation, is that we do a recombination of the property. The second recommendation I had is that the school system submit an annexation petition. And that solves several problems. If you look at your next one, the colored map that has sort of purple and green, everything that's in green is in Bedford County. It's still in our planning jurisdiction, but it's located in Bedford County. Everything in the purple is in the city of Washington, and you can see that the current high school site is in the city limits, and the purchased property is not. So what that does is that solves several issues. If you have property that's being served by water and sewer, and it's not in the city limits, then the rates are much higher than they are if you're in the city limits. And being able to try to distinguish between what's being served by not in the city and outside the city becomes complicated. So my next recommendation, if we do a petition of annexation, that would clear up all that, any questions that we had about that. With the school system not paying taxes, it really didn't make any difference anyway other than with water and sewer. The third recommendation that I made was that, if you look at your next one, is that the school system do a rezoning. And what we have with the city is we have what we call a comprehensive plan for the whole city, and what we think the city may look like in the future. Our comprehensive plan called for those two particular pieces of property, the high school site and the newly purchased site, to be the same zoning classification. So my recommendation was, since it was already in the comprehensive plan, that's what we needed to do. It didn't affect the sports complex at all, because it was the same type of use in each zoning district, so it wouldn't affect that at all. So those three recommendations were made without any relation to the soccer complex. They were done separately from the soccer complex, had absolutely nothing to do with the complex. It was just something that I recommended after all my years of planning that I thought might make the process a little easier for the school system and for the city. Last night, we, they went before the planning board and asked for rezoning, like I had requested. The planning board didn't feel like that was a good idea, so they denied the request for a rezoning. Like I said, that doesn't affect the soccer complex at all. It just means that the property will continue to be a residential zoning district, so it doesn't affect that at all. So what we want to do is, if you go through, let's see. I included what we call in our zoning district, we have three classifications. We have what we call permitted uses in each zoning district. That means you can do it, it's your right to do it, and no question about it. You can go do it, as long as you meet the, all the standards you're fine. We have what we call developmental standard. Those uses are permitted, but you might have to meet some additional standards in order to do that. You can see that under developmental standards, athletic fields are included in that. So on this particular piece of property that's been purchased, a sports complex and a soccer complex is a permitted use, so that's not disputed. That means that they will be able to do it. One of the standards that you have to meet is that the site plan has to go in front of the city council for a public hearing, and what that does, that allows the adjoining property owners to voice any concerns they may have. And if there's things that can be fixed, and we certainly want to try to do that, to sort of make everybody consistent and everybody okay with it. So as far as the sports complex and the soccer complex is concerned, those recommendations that we had previously does not affect that at all. On that particular piece of property, the soccer complex is a permitted use, they just have to go in front of the city council and allow for a public hearing in order to do that. So I don't know if I've cleared that up, or if it's clear as mud or what, but I just wanted to let the board know, just sort of keep you in the loop about where we are with it. Our next process will be when a final site plan is submitted to our department, and we'll make arrangements that we go to the city council and have a public hearing. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions from anybody, if you have any, on the proposed soccer complex.
Any questions?
Excuse me. I'd like for you to come back in the fall and just update us. That'd be great to.
Say that again?
Come back in the fall, once school was back in, and update us on where the project's going.
Okay, sure.
However long, however many times you feel like you need to update us.
I'd certainly like to keep you in the loop when that goes, when the site plan goes to city council. I certainly think this board needs to know when it's going there, so we can make sure that your plans for the future and the council plans for the future sort of coincide with each other. Yes, ma'am?
I have a question, and I'm just, and EC does, too, so it's not too many. So when I'm looking at this third page, and you said that the actual property we're looking at is not in the city, even though everything around it is in the city?
That's correct.
So why does it have to go before the city council? Because the adjoining, the neighboring properties are in the city?
Yeah, the reason has to go, even though it's not in the city limits.
Why do we have to have your approval if it's not in the city?
What we're allowed to do by state statute is we're allowed to go about a mile and a half outside of our jurisdiction to do planning and zoning. And even though this is not in the city limits, it is in our planning jurisdiction. So that's why it still has to go in front of the city council, even though it's not in the city limits, and it's in our planning jurisdiction.
It's very similar to the John Small PS Jones satellite annexation, is what you're talking about.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. And by doing that, we will have police protection and so forth also. Is that correct?
That's good. That's exactly correct. If something would happen on that particular piece of property and it's not city, I'm sure the city group would respond, but then they'd be that, you know, who's supposed to respond first? It's supposed to be sheriff.
Cuts out a lot of confusion.
Yeah, that's right. And you try to end all that confusion, but you're exactly right.
We've been down this road before.
Did the planning board give any reason for why they denied the rezoning request?
One of the reasons is, when you look at a rezoning, you just don't look at one particular use. You just don't look at a sports complex. You have to look at all the listings that are in that particular zoning district and say, "Well, for some reason, they don't want to do a support complex. Maybe they want to do a hospital." So, and some people may not think that a hospital is appropriate for that. So they have to look at all of them. They didn't think all the uses are appropriate for that particular piece of property.
And where do you say you stand on the annexation portion?
That'll go.
When might that happen, if it happens?
With annexation, it'll go, it usually takes three meetings of city council for that to occur.
Have we had one meeting yet?
No, have not had one meeting yet. So it'll be at least three months for that to occur, but you can still, if the plans are moving forward with the complex, you can move forward as long as you're moving forward.
But would that make a difference on how they run the water?
No. No, not as long as you're in that process of annexation. It won't make any difference how they run it.
Okay. Because if it's not city, then we have to do.
You don't have to get away.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That won't.
I don't want to assume, since they denied us on the rezoning, nothing's a slam dunk anymore.
If the properties were combined, would it then be easier to rezon? I mean, why wouldn't you rezon it to match the rest of the property?
Well, that was my thinking when I recommended it.
Okay.
That it would match with, and this still may happen, this still may occur.
Is the group, the group that's pursuing all of this, are they looking at combining the properties?
It was my suggestion. Are you talking about the booster club that went in front of the, yes, they were.
Okay. Why didn't they do that first?
Well, they did do it first. It's all part of the process.
Okay.
And the site plan is the first, and after I received the site plan, it was my recommendation that they continue doing these items, and that's what they did.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're following the proper.
They're following what you recommended.
Yes.
Are there any county hoops, and I know you don't represent the county, but are there some county hoops we need to be jumping through?
No.
So we don't have to meet with them over anything?
No, strictly see.
I would encourage you all to have the booster club here communicating with you all, too, so there's not action going on that you're not aware of.
Do we have a date? Isn't there an upcoming hearing on July 9th? Am I mistaken about that?
That's correct. The next city council meeting will be July 9th. Yes, sir.
And that, would we would make a formal request?
For the annexation.
And also the site plan approval?
No, no, I hadn't, I hadn't gotten the site plan yet. So whenever we get that, I'll schedule that for the city council, or we have not received that yet.
Mr. Rodman, looking at all your steps here on this first sheet, I want to ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Hard to finish. Your crystal ball, when will all these hoops be completed? When do you think we'll have it all done, so we can go forward?
Well, like I said, say you wanted to start, or the group wanted to start construction next month, as soon as they give me the site plan and it goes in front of council, you can start construction. You don't have to have the annexation completed, you don't have to have the rezoning completed to do that.
I was wondering the same thing. Could really delay things if you wait for all of that.
Yeah, and you don't have to.
Okay.
The only thing we're waiting on is a site plan.
They have the money to start.
Well, that's true.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving down to item number five, discussion action, cyber policy approval. Mr. Willie McCarroll.
We brought before you all at the last meeting a presentation about cyber policy, cyber insurance for the school system, and the quote was about $15,000. So we went back to the School Board Association, and they do offer an add-on policy, and Mr. Malek with Technologies had extensive conversations with the School Board Association on the coverage, and it's his recommendation that we, rather than go with the presenter the other night, that we go with option two with School Board Association, which is $8,431.
Are we getting the same coverage?
We're getting that and a little bit more.
And less money?
Yes.
Okay. Well, do we need to wait another month and you can find someone?
No, this quote expires first.
You don't hurt.
Eventually be free, man.
Yeah, just take the policy.
Okay.
The board would approve?
I move approval.
All right, let's do it. Okay, got a motion and a second.
Second.
I'm going to say any discussion, but none. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. Next item is the Verizon lease proposal. Mr. Malek.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
A subcontractor from Verizon contacted me several months ago, indicating that Verizon is interested in either maybe doing a lease on the Catterapole that we have at Southside High School, or replacing a lamp post out there and putting a cellular array on that lamp post. So they wanted to go to the site just to look and see what the lay of the land was. So I met them out there. They looked at the lay of the land, and then they sent me an email with a possible proposal. What I'm here for tonight is to ask the board if they would consider allowing us and the board attorney to maybe go into some initial negotiations with Verizon based upon the criteria that's in your board packet. And the recommendation from Verizon would be to put in a lamp post that would replace the one, one of the ones in the parking lots on the campus. The only additional thing to it, as you see, is that array at the top, and then they would also supply all the power and everything at the base to it themselves. One of the caveats with this, though, is that the lease agreement is in five-year chunks, and Verizon would probably like to have 15 of the 20 years of those years to get their return on investment. So the reason why Verizon is doing this is because they have a cell tower on, it's 33, and I guess when everybody's in session at Southside High School, it overburns that cell phone tower. So what they're trying to do is trying to take some of the load off that main tower and allow the people at Southside to have probably better coverage in a small range. It's not a large tower. So what we're doing really is asking for permission for the board attorney to start some contract negotiations, and of course, at that point, once we see what Verizon is truly going to offer and what their terms are, then we bring it back for approval.
Any questions?
I think the only thing would be, whether there was any damage to the pole after it was erected, whose responsibility that would be?
It would be the contractor. Right, and that's part of the negotiations, the contract.
Looking at the rent for a light pole, I'd say, I'd say, we got, well, we got 13 schools? I mean, light poles, we got, same.
I like your thinking, Booth. I like your thinking. Any more discussion?
The liability part, I can't imagine if the poles are sticked out and that anything would come down, but if it did on cars or anything, that liability comes theirs.
Right, that's another thing, I'm sure that would have to be part of that contract, but that would make sure the board attorneys to decide that length, because that would be a little bit good points.
So all we're proving now is just to let Kim pursue.
Right.
Move approval.
Yes, sir.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Hudson, LP contract.
Good afternoon. You have the current contract that is looking for you. They are asking above our current contract, the current that we had in the past, it's actually expired, but they're asking for a .005 increase that is included in this .07 in the shipping charges, and they're asking for a .0075 increase, which is included in the 16 cents. So there is my recommendation that we continue a contract with Tidewater, they have a great service. We haven't had a moment we run out like our previous times we had. They monitor it very well, and we have not had an issue, so it would be my recommendation. It's y'all's decision.
What was it, two-year contract? How many years was it before?
It was a two-year.
And I was, because I was just going to say, being involved when it originally came about, I can't remember one single call we paid.
We had not had one.
It went from like worry, worry, worry to absolutely zero.
During the winter, we had issues before, and this time during our cold spell, they were on, they kept us serviced well.
I don't want to lose, nothing's sure.
And they're local country.
They're local.
That's it.
Got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, before we move on, we've got to contact one of our board members. He wants to be on speakerphone. He wants to hear the discussion on the, on the capital update.
Hey, Terry. This is Don. We've got you on speakerphone. Hey, how are you guys?
Okay. All right. We're going to go into item 5.4, capital update and budget approval. Mr. Hudson.
I have two items before you for approval, or to make you aware. We did send out the two last, it was a roof garden piece. We got them back, and Ms. Lee's and I opened them. The Washington High School band boosters, the low head was RNS roofing, but they kind of messed up on their bid total there. They're supposed to combine it, but if you add the 966 to the 12,800, that brings them at 13,766, which our budget is 9,000, so we're over budget on that project. And the other roof was Chalkwood T., yeah, Chalkwood T. Primary's Media Center and a little connecting roof on the backside of it, and that project came in at 96,417, and we had a $93,600 budget. So we're over on both of these projects.
Can you quickly tell me what is the difference if you combine the two, subtract what we have allowed for, how much are we shorting?
Give me just a second.
And if you can multitask, I have not read these word for word.
Yes, ma'am.
Do they meet all the requirements?
The RFP, yes, ma'am.
And do any of them exceed them?
No, they ask us that, but they did exactly what we asked for.
Okay.
So our bids are the same? I mean, not different. That could work. Yeah, the money definitely not, but it's, we're trying to figure that one out.
Some of it's 116,000.
Site plan was my recommendation that they continue doing these items and that's what they did.
Okay.
So they're following them. They're following what you recommended. Are there any county hoops, and I know you don't represent the county, but are there some county hoops we need to be jumping through?
No.
So we don't have to meet with them over anything?
No, strictly see.
I would encourage you all to have the booster club here communicating with you all too, so there's not action going on that you're not aware of.
Do we have a date? Isn't there an upcoming hearing on July 9th? Am I mistaken about that?
That's correct. The next city council meeting will be July 9th. Yes, sir.
And that, when we would make a formal request?
For the annexation.
And also the site plan approval?
No, no, I hadn't, I hadn't gotten a site plan yet. So whenever, whenever we get that, I'll, I'll schedule that for the city council. But we have not received that yet.
Mr. Robbins, looking at all your steps here on this first sheet, I want to ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Hard to finish. In your crystal ball, when will all these hoops be completed? When do you think we'll have it all done, so we can go forward?
Well, like I said, say you wanted to start, or the group wanted to start construction next month. It's, as soon as they give me the site plan and it goes in front of council, you can start construction. You don't have to have the annexation completed, you don't have to have the rezoning completed to do that.
I was wondering the same thing. Could really delay things if you wait for all of that.
Yeah, and you don't have to.
Okay.
The only thing we're waiting on is a site plan.
I don't think they have the money to start.
Well, that's true.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to item number five, discussion action, cyber policy approval. Mr. Willie McCarroll.
We brought before you all at the last meeting, a presentation about cyber policy, cyber insurance for the school system. And the quote was about $15,000. So we went back to the school board association and they do offer an add-on policy. And Mr. Maylick with technologies had extensive conversations with the school board association on the coverage. And it's his recommendation that we, rather than go with the presenter the other night, that we go with option two with school board association, which is $8,431.
Are we getting the same coverage?
We're getting that and a little bit more.
And less money?
Yes.
Okay. Well, do we need to wait another month and you can find someone?
No, this quote expires first.
You don't hurt.
Eventually be free, man.
Yeah, just take the policy.
The board would approve?
I move approval.
All right, let's do it. Okay, got a motion and a second. I'm gonna say in discussion, but none, all right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, next item is the Verizon lease proposal. Mr. Maylick.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
A subcontractor from Verizon contacted me several months ago, indicating that Verizon is interested in either maybe doing a lease on the Cintera pole that we have at Southside High School, or replacing a lamp post out there and putting a cellular array on that lamp post. So they wanted to go to the site just to look and see what the lay of the land was. So I met them out there. They looked at the lay of the land and then they sent me an email with a possible proposal. What I'm here for tonight is to ask the board if they would consider allowing us and the board attorney to maybe go into some initial negotiations with Verizon based upon the criteria that's in your board packet. And the recommendation from Verizon would be to put in a lamp post that would replace the one, one of the ones in the parking lots on the campus. The only additional thing to it, as you see, is that array at the top. And then they would also supply all the power and everything at the base to it themselves. One of the caveats with this, though, is that the lease agreement is in five-year chunks. And Verizon would probably like to have 15 of the 20 years of those years to get their return on investment. So the reason why Verizon is doing this is because they have a cell, a cell tower on its 33. And I guess when everybody's in session at Southside High School, it overburns that cell phone tower. So what they're trying to do is trying to take some of the load off that main tower and allow the people at Southside to have probably better coverage in a small range. It's not a large tower. So what we're doing really is asking for permission for the board attorney to start some contract negotiations. And of course, at that point, once we see what Verizon is truly going to offer and what their terms are, then we bring it back for approval.
Any questions?
I think the only thing would be, well, if there was any damage to the pole after it was erected, whose responsibility that would be?
It would be the contractor. Figure it out.
Right, and that's, that's part of the negotiations, the contract.
Looking at the rent for a light pole, I'd, I'd say, I'd say, we got, well, we got 13 schools. I mean, light poles, we got seen.
I like your thinking, Booth. I like your thinking. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I, I, the liability part, I can't imagine if the poles are sticked out and that anything would come down, but if it did on cars or anything, that that liability becomes theirs.
Right, that's another thing, I'm sure that would have to be part of that contract. But that would make sure the board attorneys to decide that length, because that would be all good points.
So we're approving now is just to let Kim pursue.
Right.
Right.
Move approval.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Hudson, LP contract.
You have the current contract that is looking for you. They are asking above our current contract, the current that we had in the past, it's actually expired, but they're asking for a .005 increase that is included in this .07. And the shipping charges, and they're asking for a .0075 increase, which is included in the 16 cents. So there is my recommendation that we continue a contract with Tidewater, they have a great service. We haven't had a moment, we run out like our previous times we had. They monitor it very well and we have not had an issue. So it would be my recommendation, but it's y'all's decision.
What was it, two-year contract? How many years was it before?
It was a two-year.
And I was, because I was just gonna say, being involved when it originally came about, I can't remember one single call we paid.
We had not had one.
It went from like worry, 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 to absolutely zero.
During the winter, we had issues before, and this time during our cold spell, they were on, they kept us serviced well.
I don't want to lose, nothing sure.
And they're local country.
They're local.
That's it.
Got a motion?
I move approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second. No more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay. Before we move on, we've got to contact one of our board members. He wants to be on speakerphone. He wants to hear the discussion on the, on the capital update.
Hey, Terry, this is Don. We've got you on speakerphone. Hey, how are you guys?
Okay, all right, we're gonna go into item 5.4, capital update and budget approval. Mr. Hudson?
I have two items before you, for approval, or to make you aware. We did send out the two last, it was a roof garden piece. We, we got them back and Ms. Lee's and I opened them. The Washington High School van boosters, the low head was RNS roofing, but they kind of messed up on their bid total there. They're supposed to combine it, but if you add the 966 to the 12,800, that brings them at 13,766, which our budget is 9,000. So we're over budget on that project. And the other roof was Chocweni Primary, yeah, Chocweni Primary's media center and a little connecting roof on the backside of it. And that project came in at 96,417 and we had a $93,600 budget. So we're over on both of these projects.
Can you quickly tell me what is the difference if you combine the two? Subtract what we have allowed for, how much are we shorting?
Give me just a second.
And if you can multitask, I have not read these word for word.
Yes, ma'am.
Do they meet all the requirements?
The RFP, yes, ma'am.
And do any of them exceed them?
No, they asked us that, but they did exactly what we asked for.
So our bids are the same?
Yes.
Not true.
Yeah, the money definitely not, but it's, we're trying to figure that one out.
Some of it's 116,000.
And are these on the website?
So what was the difference between what came in and what, what we had budgeted?
That's what he's figuring out.
Okay.
I can't hope I tagged right.
I was trying to give you the benefit of the doubt. I can't even.
This, Washington High School is 4,766.
That one's about 3,000 or something.
I'm not doing math.
About less than 8,000.
What is it?
Total. Eight.
2,870.
That totals everything.
Would be around, around.
Yeah, about 7,500.
About 7,500.
Yep.
Okay, we have to take from. How much percentage was?
What was the total of those two projects together?
Ninety-something.
93 and?
7583, 7,500.
Both projects together. What was the bid, what was the, what was the budget that we had, or the total price?
110, 183 is the total price it charges. For both. Two different contractors, but yes, that'll be total.
That was what the bid, bid prices were? 110, 183?
We had a budget of 102,600.
And we had a budget of 102,600.
But, you know, I mean, doing this process over a long period of time, we have probably more come in under, than a few that come in over. And I don't want to say it's an estimate, but before you ever put the bid out there, these amounts that we come up with, I mean, you're never going to be right on the money with these.
We never can, you know, take a basic price and.
That's right.
Figure square yards of roof and that's what we go with.
That's right.
And you just have to hope that it's a lot.
Yeah, rubber costs go up and the, the, the phone goes up, everything goes up and down with market values all around petroleum. So petroleum prices go up, it goes up.
That's right.
I think the concern is if it goes much beyond 75, when we get to over $10,000 more, I mean, that's just, that's enough, we gotta back up and think about it. We got, we got a tight budget, we have to work, we have to.
I agree.
And are these RFPs, they're on the website, right? Because it just seems like we see the same ones and I just.
Yes, ma'am, we post them, we invite actually about nine or 10 roof bidders, but we get in the same ones that's interested.
Who, who is RNS? Where are they from?
Out of Kinston, too.
There's nobody local that wants?
There's no local commercial contractors that do flat roofings.
I think, I think you told me.
There are some metal roofing contractors and I even called a couple of them that wanted other bids and said, are you bidding? And I said, I'm just too busy. It's not what I do, at that time.
Well, if they're too busy, then, then we can accept that. If they're being denied an opportunity, not that you're doing it, but if they're not getting an opportunity to bid, then we need to change that.
Because one of them actually helped me work, work on the RFP of the metal roof, because I hadn't done a metal roof. And I thought he was going to bid and I called him up and he said, no, I'm just too busy, got too much to do, too much on my plate.
So probably.
Well, we gotta start these roof systems sometime, so. I, I have no problem with that because, I mean, that's about as close as you're going to get on some of these jobs, with the hill we have on there. I move approval on them.
And I second it. My only discussion is if they come to you and it's going to be a lot more than what we're planning on.
No, it's gonna be. That's contract price.
So they gotta stick to that.
Yeah, I'm moving.
They got 60 days. They got 60 days on it. You know, if we have 60 days.
To honor the price.
Right, I'm moving approval on these amounts here.
Okay, all right.
Motion second. All right, all in favor of this motion, say aye. All opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, 5.6, local current expense budget.
There was still stuff.
Number two, Stan. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm moving right along here, so I'm sorry, Stan.
I had just to brief up, didn't I?
No, that's it, that's it, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I bumped the number. There we go. Just to give you all an update on the current projects that we have rolling in the 17, 18 year, that have been completed in the last, since the last meeting, Eastern Elementary. Curtis Roofing has completed the re-coding of Pod 789. They did a very good job cleaning neat and out and no disruption. They actually did the last week and a half of school, worked on the roof and everything went well.
Is that watering feet of the classroom?
Ma'am?
They did get some water in?
No, ma'am, it was not. It was our air conditioning frame that stopped it.
That's what got the water.
Yes, ma'am.
But water came in in the classroom, I heard that.
Yes, in the hallway in one of the classrooms. But it's got a system.
So it wasn't disruption for the roof, but the teachers had a little disruption.
Yes, but we had it cleaned up before they got kids in school that way.
Yeah, they said you got.
Yeah, we never, we didn't miss any classrooms, huh? Bath Elementary, Curtis and Curtis of Kinston completed that roof, were replaced, everything's great but then, and Curtis, Curtis also completed building four testing roof last week, that was completed. So that finishes out, the last two that you just approved, that finished out in 17, 18.
And just for the TV.
Leads to asphalt.
Just for the TV audience, Curtis Roofing and Curtis and Curtis, I can't even say it, Roofing are two different groups.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we've got outstanding asphalt projects that, that.
We're waiting on those RFPs to come back and finish up.
And I wanted you all to know that Stan has already worked on the documentation to send out for the upcoming year capital projects. We're jumping on them early, so that won't be something that comes in at the last minute.
I hope I can have a lot of those done this summer. We're going to go and get them out and set. And I submitted the custody RFP to Ms. Kim today for her to look over, so we'll have that out hopefully next week.
Okay, everybody all right with that? All right, Stan, stay right there, we're gonna move to 5.5, 2018, 2019 capital budget approval.
Yes, this is the budget, it was presented to you last meeting and we had Mr. Dunn clean it up when we made the changes in the, to cut the money back to meet what our budget is. We deleted the items that were actually deleted and added the Northside Chiller coal replacement. And 40% of our capital.
So what I'm looking at is the 1,115,000, which is what the appropriations from the county were, and the projects that you have listed, we came back to match that up.
Correct, that's what we squeezed them together.
I got it, yeah, because we already talked about this. So that's what you're asking us to approve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then, can I jump ahead? I know we'll get to it when, but I need to ask you right now. So on the item that's getting ready to come up in a minute, the budget resolution, it shows for 18, 19, and I know there's a good reason, so just tell me what it is. Fund four, capital outlay, it says 1,115,695. Fund balance appropriated 200,177 for a total of 1,315. Why is it different on the regular budget resolution and what Stan's asking us to do? Where's it different?
You're talking about on the large budget resolution?
Yeah, right, yeah, right here. That's right, I mean, we, we can get to it there, if, I just want to make sure before we approve this, that that's what's being matched up over there.
When he, when you go to the, the actual budget page that he's showing you, the second page of this sheet.
Okay, hold on, the first, yeah, because the first half is expenditures. Is that what you're saying?
The second page, it will show a fund balance appropriation. Y'all didn't get the second page. Okay, that's the problem.
Okay.
Basically, basically, the projects that are currently not finished, like when we drafted this, the testing roof and the Bath Elementary roof were not completed. So that's why the, those projects that were still in the fiscal year 17, 18, had balances in them.
About 200,000.
Being it wasn't spent, it would be fund balance that we would spend to complete those projects. So basically, it comes down to 187,990.7 to complete those, rest of those projects that are left over from 17, 18.
And we had already appropriated that money.
Yes.
From not going forward, but this past year.
That's right.
Are you saying the second page to Stan's?
There was, yes, I didn't give Lisa the, the little section that talks about what we're currently working on 17, 18. The two roof projects that Stan just approved and the potential asphalt.
Because you know which one? Because you know which one I'm talking about, the second page?
Yes.
Because when you said second page, this is a second page.
Right.
But, but on here, it was 200,177. That's all I was looking for. I was just trying to figure.
On this second page that was admitted to you all, it listed the 18 projects, had the testing center roof at 4375, and the Bath Elementary at 78,1250. But it left on there, the Chocweni Primary replacement library roof at 936, the Washington High School van boosters at $9,000, central office parking lot 3,500, Northeast Elementary.
Yeah, you're right, I got you. So basically, the 200,000 is really just carryover from this year.
That's right, just finish up the projects. And we'll tweak both the resolution to reflect the changes that you gave tonight.
Good, okay. Everybody okay? Yeah, all right.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
What, I apologize.
No.
Because I'm kind of in the dark. What did the cooler price after we decided to go with replacing the parts in the one school versus replacing both? What, what does that come in at, Stan?
53,000.
Very good.
That was, that's a Northside Chiller replacement coals and the tanks.
Right, all right, very good.
Okay. Any more questions? See you none? Do I have a motion to exempt?
So moved.
Second, all right, motion and a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, all right. Now we'll get to 5.6 and current local expense budget. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir. So as you open this up, before you grab your heart and fall down on the floor, let me just put two numbers that you've got to consider. For the fiscal year 17, 18, the budget that was proposed, we, the board allocated $350,000 of fund balance to make sure that all local current expenses were taken care of. Of that 350,000, as of this afternoon, we have used 172. So we were able not to use the entire appropriation for 17, 18. That leaves us with approximately a fund balance of around 1.5 million dollars going into next year. So that's, and again, that's as of right now, federal and state, all that information's been totaled, and the finance department's done a tremendous job getting that all together. They're finishing up local as we speak, but we believe those are our solid numbers. So when the audit comes in, I think it'll reflect very close to that. So having said that, what is probably the biggest issue that we've faced the last two years is that three things that are out of our control are the increases in hospitalization, the increases in retirement, and the increases in salaries. Not that we want anybody to not get raises, but we, we don't control that. And the county appropriations have been, Stan, have been very static in the sense that they have not increased to, to account for those. And so that's, that's really what is putting us in a deeper financial hole, because our, even if we keep everything level in terms of staffing, those are expenses that we cannot control. And so what we've been doing is appropriate fund balance to essentially take care of those added mandates that, you know, we can't control. So what you have here is our fiscal 19 local current expense appropriation from the county is 14,392,000. You see the school resource officers appropriation of an additional 765,000. Total appropriation, 15,157,502. 500 expenditures, estimated 300,000, for a total of local county dollars of 15,457,502. Our expenditures, if you're using 17, 18 as a base, were 15,846,09. That includes the extra 172,000 of fund balance that you allocated. The school resource officer contract, when you combine the state money we get for school resource officers and the county money, is 570,000, 574,97. Our cuts, we previously talked of cutting the testing admission position, local teaching positions, or cuts totaling 394,500,000. Program enhancement, we talked about, we have to maintain the technology level, capital at 350 for technology, this would be 100,000 to maintain where Mr. Maylick and Technology Department is now. We talked about virtual academy, raising the pay that we pay our own teachers to be part of the virtual academy. The additional positions, I do have some good news. The instructional technology facilitator, the price tag is still 65,000. But working with Greg, we found some federal money to offset that, which is why it only says 27 here. The certified teacher, that there is no money to offset that, that's for the additional K5 classroom at the ed tech. The mental health professional district wide is still at 65, but we found some federal money to offset that, so it only cost the board 31. In addition, Greg has been able to squeeze out 25 grand in money for P S Jones. It's not enough money for a physician, but it would allow her to do some, it'd be essentially using it like Title I funds for tutoring, after-school programs, whatever she wanted to use the 25 for, but it wouldn't be enough to fill a full position. And I removed that from the last time, if you remember, that was on there. Then you see at the bottom again, fixed costs, based on our current information, these may come a little under, but we're, we believe we're pretty accurate on fixed costs, the 472,000. So if you take our current local budget, you subtract the amount of money the county's giving us, that leaves us a whole of 508,479 to pay for, which would be appropriated from fund balance, which would take your fund balance from 1.5 to a little less than a million dollars.
Okay, this, can we attack this a line at the time?
Go right ahead.
No, I mean, not attack, just we'll ask you a question. Well, I mean, back to the instructional, and I'm not going after any particular thing, I'm just making a point. Instructional technology facilitator, 27,000, even though Greg found some money, is Greg gonna find that money every year? Because once you, once you hire this person, I'm pretty sure we got to pay them next year too.
I mean, they're, they're, in theory, as long as our federal dollars don't change, we're good, but that could change absolutely next year.
They change every year.
Yes, sir, they do.
What I'm saying is that's not a one-time fixed cost. That's a recurring cost every year in your budget.
No, it is not.
So if you've got that big hole this year, you're more likely to have that big hole next year.
That is correct. I mean, so in theory, that's 65,000, we may find another use for the federal to, to take possibly off the total that we're on fund balance, but certainly an option.
I, I see the fixed costs on retirement and hospitalization, I realize that's stuff that we have no control over, right? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not really sure what we do have control over, but one thing sticks in my mind, it's, tell me what's different, Dr. Phillips. Last month, not last month, but two weeks ago, when I got this sheet, and it said 302,000 fund balance appropriated. I, I understand the difference between that and this time, though.
I'm pretty sure, I believe your comment was, be very careful, there's no way we can continue at 300,000 a year. So if 302,000 is bad, why is a 508 terrible?
And given, given the fund balance we have, you only have three years to do that, then you're down to zero.
I don't know what to do here, but my first thought is, there's no way you can appropriate 508,000 out of fund balance. Just, there's no way you can do this.
Let me ask you about the increase in technology.
So if three hundred and two thousand is bad, why is a five hundred and eight terrible?
And given, given the fund balance we have, you only have three years to do that.
There's no way. I don't know what to do here, but my first thought is, there's no way you can appropriate five hundred and eight thousand dollars out of fund balance. Just, there's no way you can do this.
Let me ask about the increase in technology. Is that above and beyond the three hundred thousand? Explain that to me real quick.
Okay, the capital budget gives Mark three hundred and fifty thousand for technology, for hardware projects. The hundred thousand dollars is for licenses, software, and other non-capital. Just jump right in.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Kind of maintaining what we have. So Mark, Mark in the past has generally had about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I wish he had not left, but according to Mark, each year, to maintain what we have, based on the age of our equipment and what we're doing in classrooms, he needs four hundred and fifty thousand in combined capital and local funds to keep it running. And would certainly request more if you could give it to him. But he says, according to Mark, that's the bottom line, that he can maintain what we have and keep us moving.
I believe he, we had bought some right much better equipment with some E-rate funding in the past, and we've got some major replacements coming in technology and equipment. Well, I mean, the testing computers alone, I don't think they can be upgraded to meet the new standard by the proper record.
And I, I mean, I can certainly go back and look at trying to cut more positions or look at other, other things to sort of.
Cutting, no.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting ever, let me ask, I'm just, I'm trying to put in my mind of the two go together.
And I don't mean to take up all the force, anybody wants to jump in, jump in.
I printed, this is a document we're gonna get to somewhere on here, right? Budget resolution?
Okay.
And when I look at it, it's got local current expense fund. Well, go back up here top, you've got, not to the very top, but you've got FY eighteen, fifteen million, eighty-four thousand, six oh nine. I'll leave the little dollars off. But that number is made up of all these different lines that come from the local expense budget. Am I not correct on that? I mean, you've got one figure here, but that one figure represents a whole lot of different things.
Sure.
On here.
Yes, sir.
So rather than just looking at this one-page summary you have here that says, well, let's cut a hundred thousand out of technology, we can cut a hundred thousand out of virtual. I'm just saying, here's where we need to look at.
Sure.
You've got an item on here, I mean, I'm just picking out a couple. Board of Education, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
At this point right now, before I would appropriate a, and then, and the only reason I picked out Mr. Chairman was, Mr. Willie Mack, I could tell you that I'd actually asked him earlier this week about that, and he sent me a breakdown of that line. So in other words, you've got a fifteen million dollar line here that's broken down by many lines here, and each one of these lines can be broken down into more lines, correct? So that's where you gotta start looking at to cut your budget. Go through this entire sheet here, because you've got items in here, and I'm not gonna pick on either one of them, but you've got three hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy, which, no, that's SRS, that's probably protected. But, not to, I don't know if this is you, Sam, but I'm not trying to beat up on. Plant operations, four million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. If there's anywhere in one of these lines here, if you can just take twenty-five thousand here, twenty-five thousand there, before you know it, you can make up a lot of this money. But like on, the one I will pick on, because I'm involved, Board of Education, when you gave me that, Willie Mack, it included a lot of things for travel and whatever. I would, I would just throw it out on the floor, that until we can come up with some money here, we just ban all of our travel as a Board of Education. Let's just do the virtual meetings that we have here. We come to the meetings, we'll do the virtual meetings, but other than that, we just quit traveling anywhere and take that money and put toward that five hundred and eight thousand dollars.
And if we want to go to somewhere, then we pay for it ourselves.
Or figure it out. But we can't just keep, I mean, and that's, that's just one item, and I'm only saying that one because I'm on the Board of Education. So I'm cutting into something that I might would actually go do. But you see what I'm saying, we just gotta figure out this way. We don't need to cut more positions. You need to look at these lines here and figure out what can be cut from them.
Well, Board of Education, two hundred and fifty, sounds like a lot of money to.
Well, just for the camera, since I said that, I better explain. You're Board of Education.
That's not really.
No, 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 that's why.
Yeah, I know there's a lot more to it.
I know exactly that.
What you're saying is we need breakdowns to look at some of these things.
You got to go, you can't just look at this and say, well, we're gonna do this and cut a few positions. That fifteen million dollars there involves everything from a PRC beginning at zero, zero, one to up to nine hundred and sixty-five. But I mean, there's different places in there to cut.
You need to realize that that is based on this year's operations plus the federal and the state money.
Okay.
And I've tried to utilize your local dollars as best I can.
I'm sure.
With the state dollars. We have some savings and some state expenditures that I was able to shift local expenditures up to maximize those dollars. Based on what the new money that comes in and their allotments for the F-eighteen, nineteen year, depending on the allotments that we get from the state, even though we are budgeting them right now based on current operations, they may shift based on the lack or the surplus of monies that we receive. They're not written in stone. But as we were looking at the current budget, if everything else stayed constant, and these, excuse me, were the items that we were looking at adding, this is what it would take. But again, I can't guarantee you what your state and federal money would be. It's a constant moving target. You may have a lot of money paid for in teachers one year, but based on funding and technology, I may shift them around because I can use some state money for technologies or teachers. And it would lessen those departments in your local budget.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. All I'm saying is, and I mean, I don't know that, I'm just saying. When I look on here, it says operation, well, let's don't do that. Let's look, general operations, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, I mean, that may be nothing because I don't even know what general operations means, Mr. Chairman. But not knowing, you know, I could easily say, well, make general operations four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I mean, I, that might be completely crazy because I just said, I don't even know what that line means. But I, until I know what that line means, there is no way I can vote to approve taking five hundred and eight thousand dollars out of fund balance. But that's just me.
I think what you're saying.
I think you need to really put some thought into that.
I think what you're saying is, as tight as we are, we gotta get the magnifying glass out.
Absolutely, yeah. Look at each one of these and see, I mean, I'm seriously saying, all you gotta do is get twenty-five thousand here, twenty-five thousand there, and for long, you'll have that money, or a big hunk of it. Just, just saying, folks.
What dollar figure do you feel like fund balance allocation, do you think we need to be down to?
Well, I wasn't comfortable with the three hundred and two thousand because I believe you said you weren't comfortable with the three hundred and two thousand.
So what, so what should the target be?
I would say two hundred, was my thought.
Yeah, a couple hundred thousand I could live with. So you're looking at.
Get it down three hundred thousand, is that it?
Yeah.
I think, I think our, our issues are not with these.
It's not issue with anything, it's just money's the issue.
Right. But I mean, with the, the mental health piece, the technology facilitators, where we're having help on both of those. I'm, I'm not interested in eliminating neither one of those. I'm, I'm more in line with Terry, and let's look at our, let's look at our.
Look at these.
Big, our big ticket, fifteen million, and to be sure, there's some places here and there, without making any one department take a hit that would make them suffer, I can't, I, I'm like you, Terry, I can't imagine if you're getting four hundred and seventy-five thousand, is four hundred and fifty thousand gonna put you in dire straits? Get mine. I don't know, and the reason I don't know is, I don't know what all falls underneath there.
But I think we need to look.
And I know that you do, and I know that it's probably a tremendous amount that we're asking you to come up with, but, you know.
Well, three years down the road's gonna be a harder job than what we're asking for now.
Well, if, if we, if we have to take five hundred thousand next year, we only have two years left.
We ain't gonna have.
You're not gonna have three.
And it'll be more than five hundred thousand because your fixed costs are gonna continue to go up.
That's what I just said. Just because you found money this year, if you don't find it, your fixed cost. Once you hire people, you have to continue to pay.
What, what exactly falls under operation of plant, PRC eight oh two?
Yeah.
It's operations of the schools, legible, utilities, WAN lines. It's whatever it takes to keep the school operational.
Okay, because that's, that's the biggest line item on the, on that.
I mean, this may be something that we need a separate meeting for, unless we have to approve this tonight.
Well, if we're gonna do that within five point seven, the next item needs to be.
We have to have a budget.
I don't think we can go through this tonight.
Mark, can I just ask?
Midnight, will?
Can we, can we get a breakout of, of those figures?
Well.
By next meeting?
Well, there's, there's line items, Terry, where all those figures are there, but it's like Terry Williams said, within every heading, there are subheadings. And there's so many of them.
We need a breakout of those subheadings.
Right, well, there's a lot of headings, so we might need to, to help Willie Mack be a little more specific in, in which, you know, the big ones that are, that are, you know.
He may have just answered our question. If midnight on the thirtieth is when it's, when it's punched, then that's two days.
Yeah.
Two days and five and a half hours and three minutes?
I mean, there's nothing that says we can't change it after. I mean, it's not set in stone. It's just we've gotta get a budget resolution going into the next fiscal year. But doesn't mean we couldn't come back and amend it at a later date and find three hundred thousand dollars.
Because we're not gonna take the five hundred thousand away from the fund balance on July first.
Correct.
So we can, we can find other ways to back some of those other figures up and lessen that appropriation.
That's right.
Am I right?
I, I say that we.
On those grounds, I'm willing to let you meet the deadline as long as we can have the ability to change.
I just think we need to take July, after the fourth, and come in here and have a session to really go at it.
Is everybody?
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, the mental health professional district wide, is that saying that one person will take care of the entire district?
No.
Is that what that is?
No, ma'am.
Okay, can you tell me what that is?
Sure. The goal would be, what we hope to create, we are gonna add the, an elementary class at ed tech that's for K-five students. And we also, but we also hope to create a person who would, someone that, I mean, in a perfect world, we find someone who has both a counseling background and a social work background. That person would be on call for our schools to assist, to do professional development, working with students with mental health issues. That person would be part of the EC department in the sense that they might be involved in meetings with students where there's not necessarily an electric disability, but there's a mental health issue. That person would be reaching out to families, kind of coordinating with different agencies in the community and statewide. So I mean, that, you know, their, their role would be kind of big-picture role as well as hands-on role in kind of working in conjunction with Students Support Services Department.
Okay, but where would that person be staying?
I mean, I don't know that we've found an office for them because my thought would be they would be out in the schools when they weren't meeting with local agencies or they weren't meeting in schools in general. So I mean, they'd be gonna be all over the place.
I think based off of what you just said, in my mind, that's about five positions.
Yes, it is. We've gotta start somewhere.
I know you do, I know you do, but I'm just, we're not getting all of that out by a forty-hour-a-week job. I'm gonna tell you that right now, it's not gonna happen.
And I, and I wanna, I wanna make a statement about that. I have been, as, as much as the school.
You got one person still.
From the south side of the river to the north side of the river and all the tributaries in between. And you can ask most any classroom teacher what their biggest issue is, what they have the most problem with, and they're gonna tell you that children that have emotional and mental health needs that are just not being met, not because we don't want to meet them, we don't have the manpower to meet them. But from the high school level to pre-K, that's what they preach, am I right?
That's right.
They've got children with issues. This one teacher at Northeast says, I have children with issues you can't begin to understand. And it broke my heart for her because she's working every day, probably sixty hours a week because she's working at night trying to help these kids. And we've, we've gotta give them some help somewhere. And I'm like you, Mike, I don't know how one person handles it, but gotta start.
If, if we're successful with the, the K-five program at ed tech, the idea there is that through some community partners, we have some counselors and social workers that'll be coming in. We'll also have our own folks in there, some of our behavior support folks, some of our own behavior specialists, our own teachers. So I mean, hopefully at the elementary level, we'll have a little more hands-on approach because the idea there is not, you're there forever and ever. The idea is there, hopefully we assist you, you get the treatment that you need in some form, fashion. Your family's also brought in part of it, and we find the tools to get you back into your classroom. But certainly, I mean, in a perfect world, I'd like to have a person like this in every building.
Well, I mean, you look at the schools, just in the city of Washington, you've got two elementary schools that hug over six hundred kids in them. And so you don't need a on-call person, you need a person right there at that school every day, and they would be lined up out the door.
That's my question. That's what I, that's what I was reaching for. I was trying to find out if we're talking about one person or are we talking about a group of people?
Right now, we're talking about one.
Alright, that's meeting number two that we need to schedule. I mean, really, your budget's a huge issue. This is a mental health issue. I've been in the game for fifteen years. It takes a lot, it takes a lot of manpower. And not only that, but educating our teachers. Because if you're not involved with it, it's tough to deal with on a daily basis.
We've gotta start somewhere.
So can we pass this tonight with an agreement that we meet no later than the end of July to target our appropriation of fund balance to two hundred thousand dollars?
I'll make that motion.
Is that for both five, six, and seven?
It's for local. I mean, the local appropriation was five oh eight.
And we're, we're looking at the.
Oh, I haven't even got to the next one yet, but I'm sure they're okay. I mean, I think they are. I guess this one. Did that make sense, though?
Yes.
Did you make that motion, sir?
Yes, I made that motion.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
What are we, what are we passing here?
To, to adopt the budget resolution, but come back in the month of June to determine how to cut.
July.
In July to cut back, to cut back that fund balance allocation to around two hundred thousand.
Alright, now with that, have we determined, so do we have one or two for mental health? One, one or two for the IT? And what is the deal with the money that was propagated, that was set aside by the commissioners for the resource officers?
Well, one.
So we finalize that?
One technology facilitator, one mental health person. And we are not final yet on the SRA contract. Well, that'll, that'll be something we discuss in July.
Aye.
Don Campbell, wait for Friday to get here.
Friday, looks like Friday.
In this, this approval, right?
It is.
Okay. Mark, you've got a motion, you've got a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Move down to five point seven. Approval of budget resolution. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Mr. Willie Mack?
Fund one, it's just projections on allotments. There again, I won't know until we get a letter from Raleigh or allotment report that tells me what it is. I did have a planning allotment for fund three. Those were the allotments that were, I was given to plan for. Again, revenues and expenditures are a wash. Child nutrition is based on their current operations. I will tell you that it does look like that there being free and reduced, or free lunches across the board has generated considerable revenue within that department. So it's not, I don't think, we're not exceeding the expenditures that are budgeted, but the revenues are exceeding the expenditures. And fund four, or you all have already agreed upon. Fund six, seven, and eight have carryover. Last year I didn't budget or include fund eight in it. I would rather include, not include six, seven as well as we have had invoices trickle in and we've had to modify and move monies at the end of the year and the beginning of the next year. So those, once we have a comfortable fund balance appropriation, I'll bring that to you in a budget amendment.
The, the leftover money from child nutrition, what happens with that?
It stays in their fund for their use.
But we have been charging a little bit of indirect cost for the use of facilities, so we're, wanna try to use some of that, those funds when we can do that.
They end up using it for freezer.
Yeah, they have the equipment and things.
That, that's what she's hoping to do with the excess revenues that she received this year, was making some improvements.
I mean, I think this is gonna blend into what we're gonna discuss at another time. And I'm assuming that we're.
I would have to.
This is the bigger picture of what we just looked at.
Because on page three, it shows local expense fund two, five oh eight.
Yeah.
But we can approve this subject to the change in that one line.
Correct.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept, Russ?
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, five point eight, grant budgetary authority. Mr. Willie Mack?
Last year, the board granted Dr. Phillips and myself the authority to make the necessary moves to utilize state and federal funds to close the fiscal year. I'm asking for the same resolution and authority for Mr. Dunn and myself.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thanks, sir.
Motion passes.
We're not picking on you, Willie.
No, thanks for the work you're doing.
I just, I'm worried that if, if we make that local so tight, which granted, we'll be putting some money in the fund balance, if the state allotments don't come in, we are gonna have to go there. So I understand the need to protect the fund balance, but I don't think I'm going to be able to give you a solid answer that will not change.
But, I mean, I understand that.
We're gonna have to try.
We're gonna have to try because we can't spend five hundred and eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Alright, moving down, next item, item six is a closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven eight, one to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute one fifteen C dash three twenty-one, and to consult with our attorney to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or an actual claim, administrative procedure, or judicial action. The title of the action is eighteen CVS, one fifty-seven, Nersher versus Belford County Schools. Second.
Alright, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed? We will be going into closed session, remember, Terry. Okay, we're back in open session, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the personnel agenda that...
Someone will...
Second.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would accuse myself from the one item.
Okay, all right, got a motion and a second, and you, heard Ms. Walker?
You wanna accuse?
Okay, all right, all in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's move down to the calendar.
I lost connection for some reason.
Yeah.
I'm off of it.
Well, I think I am too.
We have a monthly board meeting scheduled the 25th of July, 5:30.
Okay. And I think you'll probably wanna try to squeeze something in prior to that, to talk about the budget.
Okay, all right, what, look at July, the week of July night, I'm just trying to look at two weeks in between, what, what night looks good for everybody?
Well, on the night...
On the night.
We have somewhere we can be, right?
Yeah, I'll be gone that whole week, but y'all can do it that night.
Oh, yeah, oh, that's right, we'd be downtown.
Okay.
Terry, you, you know you wanna be...
But I'm not gonna stop, I'm not gonna stop you from doing your work.
The week of the 16th, how about the week of the... When is our next meeting, I'm sorry?
The 25th would be, that'd be two weeks back-to-back.
Well, if we, but if we had the week of the 16th, then we could do whatever adjustments we might be able to do, and then he have them ready for us the following week.
On the 25th, right.
Okay, what do you think about that?
Stay near the end.
The week of the 16th, I know that's the week before a regular meeting.
Right.
Can we do it Monday, the 16th?
Yes.
The sheet for, if everybody's, okay?
And that's budget meeting.
But you, all right?
Um, yeah, Terry and I'll have a meeting at 7:30, but we can...
We're gonna meet a little bit early, like 5:00?
5:00.
Meet at 5:00?
That's fine.
All right, let's try to do that, that'll came, Mr. 16.
I would, perhaps Willie Mack and I can bring some, some different versions of some things to look at, whatever, Mr. 16.
And I'm, I'm gonna look at what we have, and that way, maybe before then submit, email you some things.
We, we don't have a meeting in July, so let's, let's change it to 5, let's do 5:30. We won't have a meeting in July, so it won't affect...
Oh, you don't, oh, okay, so, okay, you're talking about your other meeting, okay.
Yes, the 16th.
5:30. Okay. Okay, 5:30?
16 at 5:30.
Okay, and then we'll meet on the 25th.
Okay.
Let's get this thing, okay? Is everybody straight on that?
Well, did, did Michael...
Just make sure, Lisa, if you don't mind, you send it out so Michael can...
Well, did Michael say something about meeting also, in a separate meeting for the mental, the mental...
He said that, but we could talk to him in a meeting about that.
I think we can do that on our time.
Right, I think that we're pursuing some grant opportunities, and I think that's probably what he's referencing, if we're able to get those, we might increase our numbers of mental health assistance, but at this point, it's all Roy on the grant.
Right.
So we don't need one?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't know what else, I'm assuming he wants to talk about that, I don't know what else, besides that, there may be other things.
Okay, does anybody else have anything, before we move from calendar? Okay? Board member updates? Everybody got anything? Well, I've got one thing, but I don't wanna talk about it, but we're gonna have to talk about it, I don't wanna talk about it. As everybody knows, this is Dr. Phillips' last official meeting, and it's probably